Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 7, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 7, 2022. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to when phone lines are unmuted. All phone lines will be unmuted during the consent agenda, public hearings, and public input periods, and city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts, and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
All right, and before Adrian announces presentations, I know, Kenna, you had one announcement about an agenda item you wanted to share with us.
Yes. On action item number one, I just wanted to indicate that the proposed action by the council was mislabeled as receive and file and approve, and the council at the preliminary plat level does not have approval or denial authority. That is reserved for approval or denial of a final plat. So the corrected action that should be listed on the agenda is receive and file.
Okay. And this is for the preliminary plat of Mozina Farms. So for the final plat coming in the future, that would be receive and file and approve.
Correct. And that is a mechanism of both state code and the city code.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Kenna. We're going to announce that again at the beginning of public input, just for anybody else who walks in late, so just so everybody knows that. Okay, Adrian, back to you, please.
For presentations, our first presentation is 2022 Woman of the Year Award Recognition.
Thank you for having me. I'm Amy Gilligan. I'm the Executive Editor of The Telegraph Herald, and I'm really happy to be here tonight because any time that we give out awards to some of the community leaders and recognize people in our community, those are great days for me. I love to be there. This is my community, and I love to show that recognition and to use our voice as a newspaper in that way. And the Women's Awards are particularly near and dear to my heart, as you can probably imagine. And this year, I couldn't be there. And, you know, when your company, when you have an opportunity to go on a work trip, work-related trip that takes you to Athens and the Greek Islands, well, yeah, it's hard to say no. So, but little did I know, and it was two years in the making with COVID, but little did I know that we would be presenting as Woman of the Year someone that's near and dear to my heart for more than three decades. I've been at the TH 32 years, and I've known Terry Goodman for all of that time, and known her leadership and her passion and compassion for work and for our community. And, you know, we're actually relatives. We share a, is it a great-great-grandmother? Yeah. So, long line of fierce women, and we're raising the next generations, too. But I did want to be here to rededicate this award to Terry for all the great things she does for her community, the role model she's been to me and to so many other women. So, we put together a video that kind of highlights her career, and I want to start with that, and then we'll also show you the remarks that she gave on the day of it.
Jerry came into the office and said, "Do you know how to raise money?" And I said, "Well, you know, for politicians and for the PTA, I know how to raise money." And he said, "Well, do you think, you know, you could help us? Because Bill Woodward would roll over in his grave if I didn't leverage his $2 million and make it more." And I said, "Well, how much more?" And he said, "Five million." I said, "Well, we can try."
Terry's the perfect example that one person can change the world, because I know she's changed our world.
Rick Dickinson brought the city administrator from Duluth, Minnesota, to Dubuque to talk about their riverfront redevelopment, or lakefront, in Duluth. And I remember sitting in this room with maybe 50, 60 people and thinking, "Oh, my gosh, they've transformed their community. This guy is awesome." And I was thinking, "We need to talk about hiring him to come to Dubuque to help us, you know, work on restoring our downtown and community," because we were, of course, in the throes of the '80s. And I remember him as if he could read our minds, looking at us and saying, "And by the way, if you think there is someone who's going to ride into town on a white horse and save your community, you're wrong." He said, "Take a look around at the people sitting in this room, because you will be the people who save your community." And I remember thinking, "Dang." But I also thought, "That's an exciting challenge," and looked around and thought, "We have all the right people in the room. We might as well just dig in."
It would be a mistake to just focus on the over-billion dollars she's raised for local not-for-profits and local governments in our area, because her true talent is bringing people together to achieve a goal around a common cause.
So then we approached Mike Van Milligan, and Rick Dickinson and I met with the mayor, dug in at the time, and we decided we'd form a partnership with the Chamber in the city and this museum, the Riverboat Museum Historical Society, and we'd make it a bigger campaign. And we did. And you know what we learned? Don't dream little dreams. They don't inspire people, you know? So, everything we've done since then is dream big.
My wife came home on a Friday evening, and she said, "Mike, did you hear? Terry's leaving the museum." I didn't say a word to my wife. I just walked over to the phone. I called Terry, and I said, "Terry, do you have any plans?" She said, "Well, not yet, Mike. I'm still trying to decide." By the next week, she was Assistant City Manager for the City of Dubuque.
And the very first thing the city manager said to me, and I said, "What's my job here?" Because I'd left a museum, kind of. But he said, "We need to find money to build that B branch." Well, there is no federal money for water infrastructure. I mean, there are loans, but there are no grants. Ever since 1970, the Clean Water Act doesn't exist. Cedar Rapids legislators went to the State House and wrote, proposed legislation that would help Cedar Rapids, of course it would. Their flood mitigation legislation that they proposed said, "Any city that receives money from FEMA or the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will receive this matching incremental increase in local option sales tax that will come from the state. State sales tax come back to the community to plow into flood mitigation projects." Well, that left out every city, pretty much in the state of Iowa, because you don't get FEMA money, you don't get Army Corps of Engineers money unless you have a millionaire flood like Cedar Rapids did. So we amended that, and this is collaborative work with city staff and working with Darren Mearing, who is a tremendous city engineer, who's worked tirelessly on B branch. And we amended the language to say, "Or funds emanating from the Clean Water Act." Well, the Clean Water Act is the fund that comes from, has SRF, which is State Revolving Loan Funds, but they're loans, but nonetheless, we put that in so every city in Iowa could benefit from the flood mitigation program, and we subsequently got about $90 million.
Terry is a community builder, and she has a big definition of community. So we're thrilled that she's focused on our region as part of her definition of community. But she's also brought partnerships together all the way up and down the Mississippi River, from New Orleans to Minneapolis-St. Paul, because Terry has a true passion about the river.
I think some of it is, number one, identify your passion, and as Joseph Campbell says, "Find your bliss and follow it," so that, find that joy in your life through volunteer activities. But number two, I think that, you know, that will lead you to develop skills, and it will open doors and provide opportunities for growth. So I really think it's in giving you receive, you know? I really do believe that.
Mayor? It's YouTube. It's that time of year.
Yeah, and Eric will play the next video next.
Holy smokes. Thank you all. I'm just speechless. I'm humbled by this award, and it was a huge surprise to me, because I am a part of this team. And I do want to begin with some gratitudes, my granddaughters teach me that, to The Telegraph Herald, because we learned when we had our first big campaign for the riverfront, the one thing we were forgetting, along with working so hard, was to celebrate. So thank you so much, Telegraph Herald, for celebrating women and celebrating our community. I want to give them a hand. And I also want to congratulate the other women who received these awards today, Lauren, Laura, and Cindy. The future is bright. It's just great to have you all here and to be recognized. And Kay, for your wonderful remarks. Thank you so much. And I have to turn my husband, John, for the support and the strength you offer to me every day, to my children, Emily, who's in Boston, Ellen Goodman Miller, who is here today, and her husband Tommy, and our granddaughters Violet and Freya, thank you for coming so much. And you're not alone in missing school, and I, again, I know it's a sacrifice, but thank you for coming. And Tommy Miller's mom, Lynn Miller, who's very well-known in the community, too, thank you for coming and for all the work we do, co-grandparenting. And for our son Edward Goodman and his wife Lindsay and baby Sammy in San Francisco, and for Elise and Austin Hoffman in Washington, DC. They are my inspiration. Family is everything. And I want to thank, too, my folks. I came from a very strong family with a father who said, "Six girls and one boy. Girls can do anything and will do everything." And so we did. But also strong women, my mother, who achieved a doctorate after having seven children, going back to school and teaching at Augustana University in Rock Island. So I stand on the shoulders of so many women and men, but on the shoulders of women who always led the way and taught us to believe in ourselves and let us know that we could accomplish great things. I also want to say, I get up every morning and I work with the most incredible professionals. City of Dubuque, I want you to know, the women and the men I work with are awesome. And Mike, thank you for the nomination. I'm just humbled by this award. I will not retell every story they just put in the film, but I do want to remind us all that it is this community. One person doesn't do anything alone. It is a team, and this is part of our community team here in this room. When the gentleman came from Duluth, Rick Dickinson had just started at Greater Dubuque Development. There are people in this room who were there that day, and I know we all thought, "Hire him. We need help." Where we're sitting right now was nothing but dirt. It was dirt. There was nothing down here but the Diamond Joe Casino boat, because they were still required to be on the water. There was the little tiny Riverboat Museum I had just taken a job at, and there was a recession that was devastating, with 10% of the population leaving Dubuque. Of course, the legendary stories and T-shirts that said, "Well, the last one out of Dubuque turned off the lights." It was frightening as a young mom with four children, trying to imagine what we would do next. So this gentleman came, and we were at the Chamber of Commerce, or I mean, at Greater Dubuque, but we were at the Chamber offices, and he told us, you know, all these great things they did in Duluth and the lakefront, and we all thought, "We're going to hire this guy." And when he said, "Look around. It's the people in this room. I just want to remind you of that, because nothing changes. There are challenges now. We're coming out of COVID. You know, the economy has not fully recovered yet. We have dreams, big dreams. We went from the River Museum, the America's River Project, where we partnered with the city and the chamber. We learned the strength of partnerships, the incredible magic it can perform. When you have a dream and you want to make it a reality, you can work hard, but you need partnerships." And so we went on. Dan Lo Bianco and Main Street had a master plan, and they redeveloped Main Street. There was nothing at Main Street from the Holiday Inn down here to the end. There was one gentleman's bookstore, I think, and movie theater, but that was it. I mean, seriously, this wasn't that long ago. The transformation in Dubuque then from the Main Street redevelopment, and then Nancy Van Milligan, the Chamber, and Jim and Joe partnered with the foundation to have envisioned 2010. The community came together, thousands of people, and identified 10 goals, and one of them was the Millwork District. Surprise! John and Mary Gronin, two incredibly passionate people about restoring Dubuque's historic neighborhoods, historic places. Those were dirt streets down there, too. So we transformed the Millwork District then, again, with all people coming to the table, other developers, the federal government, the state government, city government, and lots of citizens. We came together and transformed the Millwork District into what it is today. And then we looked at the North End, and the city had to look at it seriously. And as Mike said, the first thing he said to me was, I said, "What do I do here?" He said, "Find money for the B branch," because Pam Yoakam is here, and she knows, living in that neighborhood, Audrey Mori, and all our friends who lived down on the North End, decades of flooding in their homes. Getting up in the middle of the night and mucking out four feet of water out of your basement, we could not neglect that any longer. And so we began the process of envisioning a solution to that problem and ended up raising, you know, nearly $300 million to reimagine and redesign and protect the people who live on the North End. So while it's not finished yet, and there are pieces there, let's think about what comes next. You know, we already know that Lauren and all of you in this room, the next generation, have great passion, a great work ethic, and great ideas. We have Schmidt Island. We have Field of Dreams. We have a new YMCA. We have an art museum ready to launch and create a new vision for themselves in an expanded space. It can happen. It can happen with everyone working together. And don't forget government. I have had the great privilege of representing our community at the federal, state, and local level for 25 years. And it's easier to talk to someone in the White House, I will tell you, or in Congress than it is speaking to all of you today, because I feel as though this is just such an honor, and I'm so humbled, and I just want to say thank you. But, you know, we heard at one point in time, "If you're not at the table, you're probably on the menu." And while rumors of my retirement have been greatly exaggerated, I will not be doing this forever. And I am so excited that you all might consider joining in the Chamber of Commerce's trip to DC in the spring, or coming to the congressional staff visit when they come to town, you know, in the fall, or joining us for the legislative trips that we make to Des Moines. If we're not at the table, Dubuque will be on the menu. So please, don't ever hesitate to approach government. We are the only country in the world that does that, which means you can drive to Des Moines and talk to our state legislators, or to the governor, or to any members of their administration. You can go to DC and meet with our members of Congress. You can meet with officials in the White House. You can tell your story, the Dubuque story, or whatever story you have. They are there for us. And remember, local government is the same. We get up every day and try to help citizens find solutions and answers to challenges or to help dreams come true where we can. So don't be shy. Be a part of the program. And before I close, and I probably went overtime, I apologize, I just wanted to read a poem by Maya Angelou that I think is important for us to leave with today, as we have so many partners in the room and so many great folks. "My wish for you is that you continue. Continue to be who and how you are to astonish a mean world with your acts of kindness. Continue to allow humor to lighten the burden of your tender heart. Continue in a society dark with cruelty to let the people hear the grandeur of God in the peals of your laughter. Continue to let your eloquence elevate people to heights they had only imagined. Continue to remind people that each is as good as the other and that no one is beneath nor above you. Continue to remember your own young years and look with favor upon the lost and the least and the lonely. Continue to put the mantle of your protection around the bodies of the young and the defenseless. Continue to take the hand of the despised, the diseased, and walk proudly with them in the high street. Some might see you and be encouraged to do likely. Continue to plant a public kiss of concern on the cheek of the sick and the aged and the infirm, and count that as a natural action to be expected. Continue to let gratitude be the pillow upon which you kneel to say your nightly prayer, and let faith be the bridge you build to overcome evil and to welcome good. Continue to ignore no vision which comes to enlarge your range and to increase your spirit. Continue to dare to love deeply and risk everything for the good thing. Continue to float happily in the sea of infinite substance which set aside riches for you before you had a name. Continue." Thank you very much for this award.
On behalf of TH Media, I'm proud to recognize our 2022 Woman of the Year, Terry Hox Goodman.
I'll stand on my tiptoes. Thank you. Again, you've heard enough from me tonight. Thank you very much. I am still, I'm humbled, I'm honored, I am so grateful. I meant especially what I said about waking up every morning and working with the greatest talent in town. We have such wonderful staff at the city and such incredible partners around the community. I have nothing but great hope for the future of Dubuque, and I'm just so grateful you took a chance on me, Mike, and invited me to join this crazy group. Thank you all so much. I'm so grateful. And thanks, Amy.
I don't think we're done yet, are we? Isn't there another presentation that involves Terry? Yeah, let's keep going.
Yep. Our second presentation is the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative Founder's Award Recognition, and Colin Wellencamp of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative is virtually on, so Colin, I will turn it over to you.
Good afternoon. Actually, good evening to everyone, and thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Colin Wellencamp. I am the Executive Director of the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, and I want to thank the mayor and Rand Gail for the opportunity to present to you this evening. For those that are not aware, the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative is an association of 102 United States mayors along the entire length of the Mississippi, from Amity, Minnesota, to New Orleans, Louisiana. We're headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. That's where I'm coming to you from. And we are, we have a very long, rich history with Dubuque, long for us, anyway. The association has only been around 10 years. This past September, we celebrated our 10-year anniversary. And I'm sorry, my little girl is in the background. I'm alone with her. My other daughter's a Girl Scout, so I might have to make this pretty quick, as she has a short fuse right now. But we presented a Founder's Award to Terry Goodman at our 10-year anniversary annual meeting in St. Louis in September. We had 13 founders, and the categories for the founders were mayors, mayoral staff, federal partners, and corporate leaders. And of course, it was an easy calculus to think of the mayoral staff that has been critical to establishing MRCTI and keeping us going. Terry Goodman played a pivotal role in that. Mayor Roy Buell was one of our founding mayors. He was on our original executive committee. He served as the second co-chair of our association after the first two. And Dubuque hosted our annual meeting in 2015. It was just our third annual meeting at the time. And Terry proved to be an incredibly powerful and valuable guiding force for our association in the very beginning of our formation, as Dubuque was one of the first cities to join the association when it was just weeks old. And then when we came out of our incubator organization in Washington to become our own independent group, Terry was critical in making that happen, keeping us whole, and making sure MRCTI came through the process on the other end stronger and better for it. This is what we presented to Terry in St. Louis in September. This is our Founder's Award. This is the seal, Lady Liberty with the bald eagle dipping her toe into the Mississippi River. And on the back, I'll read to you what it says. It says, "Terry Goodman, founder, Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, 10-year anniversary, meeting in St. Louis, 2022." So we profusely thanked Mayor Buell for all of his service and his dedication to our association, but on the staff side, as equally so. Mayor's jobs are 24/7. As Mayor Kavanaugh will tell you, you never get a day or a minute off from being mayor and working from the people. Such is the same for the staff that support and lift up those elected leaders, also 24/7. So thank you very much, Terry, for being one of our original mayoral staff founders of MRCTI. It was an honor to present this to her live in St. Louis, and thank you to the City of Dubuque for allowing us to present and for giving us such wonderful leaders and vision along the Mississippi River, from Mayor Roy Buell to Mayor Kavanaugh today. We look forward to continued work with the city and all of your wonderful people for our corridor into the future. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much, Colin. It's very good to see you, and thanks for pulling double duty for us tonight. We really appreciate that. I know that feeling. I think we all do after the last few years that we've had. So thank you very much for being here and for, oh, and hello. And we've reached the highlight of this evening's meeting. It's all downhill from here, for sure. Well, thank you so much, Colin, and to Terry, you know, we could spend the rest of this evening and evenings ahead just saying all the wonderful things about you and everything that you've done for the City of Dubuque. So for this night, we'll keep it short, since we've had some very nice things said already, but thank you so much for everything you do. I can't think of a more deserving person for these awards, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, I made the downhill comment, but they're still fun to come. And to Teri, you know, we could spend the rest of this evening and evenings ahead just saying all the wonderful things about you and everything that you've done for the city of Dubuque. So for this night, we'll keep it short since we've had some very nice things said already, but thank you so much for everything you do. I can't think of a more deserving person for these awards. And congratulations. All right, I made the downhill comment, but they're still fun to come. We've got some nice proclamations here, too.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Hospice Month.
All right. And I believe Levon Noel is here to accept this proclamation this evening. So if you'd like to say a few words first, and then I can read the proclamation for us.
Yes, my name is Levon Noel, and I'm the Executive Director of Hospice of Dubuque. I would like to thank the mayor and the members of the city council for taking the time this evening to proclaim November as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. This proclamation is very important. It provides an opportunity to raise awareness regarding hospice and palliative care so community members will know where to turn in their time of need when they or a loved one are facing a life-limiting illness. Life is a journey. At Hospice of Dubuque, we are the only local nonprofit hospice, and we have been privileged to journey with thousands of community members since 1983. So next year, we're celebrating 40 years. Our professional staff and selfless volunteers have provided residents of Dubuque and the greater tri-state area with high-quality responsive end-of-life care for over 39 years. I'm really excited about this. Earlier in the fall, Hospice of Dubuque was identified as a five-star hospice by Medicare. This places Hospice of Dubuque among the top 10% of hospices nationwide. For more information, visit Medicare.gov. With that kind of quality ranking, the community can take comfort in knowing that with Hospice of Dubuque, you, your family, and your neighbors are in good hands, receiving the best care possible. We are here, we have been here, we will be here, and we will continue to offer life-honoring care wherever you and your loved ones call home. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Levon. Thank you for all the work that you and your entire team does here in the whole Dubuque region. And thank you for being here tonight to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice serving the greater Dubuque area since 1983. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque's team of healthcare professionals and dedicated volunteers are your tri-state neighbors who have provided this life-honoring care for nearly 40 years. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque provides a service that comes to you in your time of need, in the place you call home, in hometowns and rural areas throughout our tri-state area. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque's care is individualized, focused on patient goals and support for family members, and this care brings hope, comfort, dignity, and quality of life. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque was recently identified by Medicare as the only five-star hospice in the tri-state area. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as Hospice Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment?
Absolutely.
We enjoyed a year with hospice with my late mother. She was lucky enough that when she got that terrible diagnosis that her time was going to be limited, that she fairly quickly figured out that hospice was the best answer for her. And I urge anybody who gets that bad news from their physician, from their healthcare team, make the call quick. It changes lives. When Mom and I were talking about her situation and she wasn't quite sure what she wanted to do, I said, "Well, here's today, and here's someday when your life ends." And what we're talking about is how you define the space between here and here. Boy, you couldn't have defined it better for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day.
Diane Oglesby-Rambisak is here to join us today.
Thank you, mayor and council members. As my name, Diane Oglesby-Rambisak, I am the President of the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation, which we established in 2016, shortly after my brother died of pancreatic cancer. He was 52 years old and relatively physically fit with no risk factors other than a family history and a pancreas. So pancreatic cancer month is in November. It is the third-leading cause of cancer death. It has surpassed breast cancer. It is still the least funded of all the top 10 cancers, and there is no preventative medicine. There is no screening studies such as mammograms or CT scans or colonoscopies. Our foundation has been established to actually not just raise awareness, but also funds for furthering research. We partnered up with UW Madison to their pancreatic cancer prevention clinic and also to their research center. The last five years, we've raised over $75,000 to donate to them. And today, we established a name fund gift-giving at UW for the next five years to continue. We're asking the City of Dubuque to continue to help us bring awareness and to support our mission. On Thursday, November 17th, in proclaiming that as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, we will have an event this upcoming Saturday. It'll be our second event in the month of November, when we have some great guest bartenders. And we also hold a 5K every year. It'll be our seventh year. We took one year off for COVID, but still did it virtually. And we have, again, have raised over $75,000 for research. So we just ask that people are aware that pancreatic cancer, and I think some of the statistics will be pretty mind-boggling. And so hopefully, we'll start to make some of those changes.
Thank you very much, Diane. Thank you for all the work that you've done over these years. You really have raised quite a bit of awareness and obviously, a lot of funds to be able to help with this. So thank you for all you're doing for people of Dubuque and everywhere. And thanks for being here to accept this. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month is recognized each November to bring understanding and awareness to the disease and the individuals and families affected by it. And whereas pancreatic cancer has become one of the most devastating diseases, surpassing breast cancer, to become the third-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause of cancer death by the year 2030. And whereas in 2022, over 62,210 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 49,830 will die from the disease. Whereas it is projected that in 2022, approximately 580 Iowans will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer, and 470 deaths will occur. And whereas currently, there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 46 years. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages, and 89% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of diagnosis. And whereas pancreatic cancer is only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate at just 11%, and it is the seventh-most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas the long-term health and well-being of the residents of Dubuque are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and ongoing research into early detection, effective, comprehensive treatments, and a cure. And whereas the Michael W. Oglesby Foundation is committed to raising funds and public awareness for funding the cure for pancreatic cancer research. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 17th of November 2022 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa.
Our third proclamation is Small Business Saturday.
All right. And Ryan Semm from the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce is here.
Thank you, mayor, members of city council and city staff. I appreciate you signing this proclamation for Small Business Saturday. I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't say just like, before we get into Small Business Saturday, the, you know, I feel like whenever I walk around Dubuque, I feel like I'm walking in the shadows of giants like Teri, and it's just such an honor to work with all of you. And so it was really exciting to see what we talked about earlier today. So in terms of Small Business Saturday, small businesses make up more than 90% of the businesses in the city of Dubuque, and they're the lifeblood of our economy. They employ thousands and thousands of people here and help people live the lives that they want to live. So we're glad that you're honoring small businesses tonight, and just thank you.
Well, thank you for being here to accept this and for reminding all of us about this very important day here in Dubuque. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the government of Dubuque, Iowa celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% report that the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently-owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 26th of November 2022 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Okay, Adrian.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. This is about the consent agenda specifically. So if anybody has any items to remove from the consent agenda, I'd take those items now, please. Anyone here in chambers? All right, anyone virtually?
There are no virtual comments.
Okay.
And no input received.
All right. I'll bring it back to the table then, please.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Farber.
I'm asking for item number 21 to be removed for separate discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 21.
Second.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Roussel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Ms. Farber, please.
Yes, so item number 21 is our liquor license renewals that we review every council meeting. And because I am the owner of Magoos Pizza, we are on this list at this time. So I therefore would like to recuse myself from this vote.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'll take her off the hook and move that we receive and file and approve the liquor licenses.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing, and we have two. First is Upper Bee Branch Creek Restoration Railroad Sanitary Interceptor Crossing Project, part of Phase 4 of the Bee Branch Watershed Flood Mitigation Project for November 21st, 2022. And second is Resolution of Necessity for the Proposed Urban Renewal Plan for the John F. Kennedy Road Urban Renewal Area for December 5th, 2022.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearing for the dates and times specified.
Second.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Roussel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Community Development Advisory Commission, the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, and the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. And I would just like to make a note with that one that Rick Baumhofer has withdrawn his application from consideration for that commission. And then we have appointment for the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. All right, so we have boards and commissions, and then we'll have public hearings, and then we have public input coming up after that portion of the meeting there. So first of all, for boards and commission applicant review, we have the Community Development Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term and one applicant. Is there anyone present to address the council regarding that application? Virtually?
There are none.
Okay.
And no input received.
All right. And then Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, one three-year term and three applicants for that commission. Is there anyone present to address the council on any of those applications? Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. Ron Axtell submitted an application. I just want to say thank you for your consideration for the appointment.
Thank you very much, Ron. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. We have one cross-representative whose term will coincide with their term on whatever board or commission they are serving on. And by my count, we have one, two, three applicants for this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did, before we go on, I do want to point out that Gabriel Mozina did give us an email, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Resnick. Yeah, I should mention that as well.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate that. And that was for the Community Development Advisory Commission. Thank you. And I believe we did actually also receive an email, now that you mentioned it, going back to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, from Josh Jorgensen as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. Anyone here to address those applications?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a virtual comment.
Oh, thank you.
Steve Gerhazel is on the line to address you.
Oh, wonderful, yes. Mr. Drawzal, go ahead. We can, yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, I just apologize for not being in person. I actually came directly over here from a meeting of the Catfish Creek Watership Management Authority, the other commission or the commission that I serve on, correct me. But I just wanted to introduce myself, I think many of the council members know me. Just so you know, that I had previously had the honor of being appointed to this commission several years ago. I had to resign from that. I was board of the Operation of the Community Action Agency. I was chair of that board, and there were some issues with that board I needed to address requiring my attention at that time. But I just wanted to introduce myself again to the council and thank you for your consideration and to enjoy my time on the Resilient Community Advisory Commission for the honor to serve against the project.
All right, well, thank you very much, Steve, for being here to address us. We really appreciate that. All right, nobody else virtually, then? Thank you, all right? And then, I don't believe we received any emails for this one that I remember. Okay. All right. Then, moving on to the Civil Service Commission for the boards and commission appointments. So the last time we were together, I indicated that I would like to appoint Scott Crable for this one four-year term through April 6th, 2026. So what I would like to do actually is have the vote by roll, if we could, and ask Adrian to call that roll, and then we can all vote yes or no on that.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Roussel?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Scott Crable is appointed to the four-year term on the Civil Service Commission.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please plan to approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is rezoning request, 1660 and 1670 Asbury Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally, we're my planning services manager. The request we for you, as been described, is to rezone property from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center District to OC Office Commercial Zoning District. And these are two properties that are located at 1660 and 1670 Asbury Road. They're currently, they're built as single-family homes, and over time, being adjacent to a commercial node such as Asbury Road and University Avenue, it's kind of, those uses have kind of changed with the structure. So they were single-family, they were converted to OR office residential, and then we had some rezoning requests to do a tattoo parlor in one of the properties, which wasn't allowed in an OR, so they rezoned it to C2 and got a conditional use permit. And as you notice with these properties, there's parking lots located around the backside of them, and those were received approval as conditional use permits when they rezoned OR to be able to provide some off-street parking for the associated businesses located where the Donut Boy Shop and then the Dog House, some other uses there on the adjacent commercial property. They were all under common ownership by a previous property owner. That property has been sold, and it's been purchased by Sebastian Rogers, who's looking at reusing those structures, and he's received several inquiries with regards to having residential uses back in those buildings. Well, the C2 district doesn't allow residential uses on the first floor. So we've had a conversation with his realtor, Bob Felderman, and Mr. Rogers, to talk about what would be a more appropriate use so we don't have this constant, okay, bounce back and forth. So the flexibility that allows the office commercial, it does allow residential use on the first floor, but in the future, and say someone wanted to come in and use the first floor or an office space, that would be permitted in that OC Office Commercial District. So it allows more flexibility, and as you notice in your packet, there are different handouts with regards to the C2 zoning and the OC zoning that kind of shows a lot of the comparable uses. There's just a couple changes, mainly with that residential use above the second floor. So the zoning advisory commission held a public hearing. Staff presented a lot of the details I've just described to you with regards to that. There was no one in attendance to speak for or against the proposal. We do notify everyone within 200 feet of the property. And the zoning advisory commission found the request to be appropriate. So by a vote of seven to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends city council approve the request. Vice Chairperson Rich Russell is here, present if you have any questions of the commission, but otherwise, I'm available to answer any questions if you may have. So?
Thank you very much, Wally. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of a request from Bob Felderman to rezone property located at 1660 and 1670 Asbury Road from C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center Zoning District to OC Office Commercial Zoning District. Is there anyone here to address us on this?
Bob Felderman and the realtor that sold the property. Last owner retired, and again, when they had the parking spaces put in, the C2 zoning was more appropriate with the different people that were looking. Today, the new owner, Sebastian, has five or six people that have offered to rent it as house, as a residential house. He will have to do some rehab on the inside on one of them, but the other one, just fix up, fix up one or two doors is all. And so he, after we had some discussion, knowing how short we are of residential properties here in Dubuque, with the desire of folks to be close to everything, this fits that area. And the OC, city has been fantastic. Wally, from everyone, every department up and down, on making it so that hopefully, this could be one of the last times we have to come back and rezon the property. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, for the record, could you give your address, too, please?
I'm sorry. My address is 241 South Gate Drive here in Dubuque, 52003. I'm General Bob Realty, and I'm the one that listed and sold the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? Okay, seeing none, then, I'll bring it back to the table. All right, hearing none. Okay. Then the motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Got a motion by Jones, a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Rousell? Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number two is public hearing and approval of Bee's Drive Urban Revitalization.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and approve, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended. Second by Farber.
Okay. I, just a quick point of order. I heard approve in there, and I don't think that's part of, is that the part of the motion that you wanted, or is it?
It is, no.
Okay. To remove approve from the motion itself?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, then. Okay, we have a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending city council approve the Bee's Drive Urban Revitalization Plan and District Designation. The proposed urban revitalization plan will provide up to 10 years of tax abatement, a new construction of multifamily housing units within the designated area. The Bee's Drive Urban Revitalization Plan provides housing that is in proximity to key community services and living wage job opportunities. The development plan for the lot in the proposed district provides for the construction of a 56-unit apartment building. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
All right, thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of the Bee's Drive Urban Revitalization Plan and District Designation. Do we have anyone in council chambers to address us on this item? Anyone virtually?
There's not.
Okay.
No input received.
All right, then, thank you. I'll bring it back to the table. All right, we have a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Rousell, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Geisler Brothers Realty LLC and Dubuque Steel Products, Inc., for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Geisler Brothers Realty, and Dubuque Steel Products for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement. Dubuque Steel Products intends to construct a 7,200-square-foot expansion of their facility. The expansion, estimated to cost approximately $840,000 between building, construction, and machinery, is required to satisfy growth in the company's services. In addition to the physical improvements, Dubuque Steel Products is committed to the creation of 10 full-time equivalent jobs. The key elements of the development agreement include the following. The developer must construct a facility expansion of not less than 7,200 square feet with a capital investment of approximately $840,000 to be completed by December 31st, 2023. Number two, Dubuque Steel Products must maintain its existing 15 full-time equivalent jobs at the current facility and create 10 new full-time equivalent jobs at the new facility by October 1st, 2025. The 25 full-time equivalent jobs must be maintained through the term of the development agreement. Number three, Dubuque Steel Products will receive 10 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. These incentives are calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the development agreement. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $132,660. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adoption of a resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Geisler Brothers Realty LLC, and Dubuque Steel Products Incorporated for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement. Do we have anyone in chambers to address us on this item? Anyone virtually?
No virtual comments.
And no input received.
Okay, back to the table, then. And I'll just mention that it's good to continue to see expansions like this keep coming our way. This is exciting to have another opportunity here. So we have a motion by Resnick and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is Bee Branch Creek Trail Phase One Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank?
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Bee Branch Creek Trail Project Phase One in the estimated amount of $721,035. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adoption of a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Bee Branch Trail Creek, Trail Creek, sorry, Bee Branch Creek Trail Project Phase One Project. Okay. Anyone in the chambers to address us on this item? Anyone virtually?
No virtual comment.
Okay.
No input received.
All right, back to the table, then, for discussion. Once again, I'll just voice my excitement to see projects like this continuing. This is a, I mean, this is a great one to see the trail moving on from there. I mean, pretty soon, we're working our way towards full connection around the entire city here, so this is going to be great. All right. Motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
We will now move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, I'm going to go back to Krenner one more time because you had an announcement at the beginning of the meeting, so I'd like you to announce it again, please.
Yes, so related to action item number one, which is the preliminary plat of Mozina Farms, the suggested disposition is receive and file and approve. As a mechanism of both the state code and the city code, approval is not something the city council does of preliminary plats. It's just an acknowledgement that you're receiving and filing it, and your role comes into play during the final plat process, so the item will come back to you at a later date for approval or denial.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and before we begin, I just want to mention something quickly because it's something that's kind of been coming up here lately. So we've got a bit of a trend forming where folks will want to address the council on items, and this is something, is why we have public input here, and it's very important that we do that. But what I would ask is that, as you do so, please stick to the facts of the issue at hand. Please refrain from any personal attacks on anybody, anybody in the community. That includes any of the members here that are sitting at this desk, any members of staff, or anybody else who's a part of the community. Couple of reasons for it. One, it doesn't really help your argument. It doesn't really make it any stronger when you attack somebody personally. But the other reason is, we're gonna keep it civil in here. So, I wanna make sure that everybody knows that as we start this, and it's something I plan to try to remind us of as we do this in the weeks ahead, too. So, with that said, because I know that there's, sometimes there's some emotional items that come up, so I think it's important that we are able to express that, but do so appropriately. So, with that said, thank you very much for waiting so patiently this evening, and you're up.
My name is Jennifer Nye, and I am a 2024 presidential contender for the 24 election for president, and I find myself in a peculiar situation. I got involved in a car accident last year where I snapped my leg off in a car accident, and I never thought I'd see myself in a wheelchair by any means whatsoever. It's not a pleasant experience to find your leg discapitated, and you have to resort to other means to get around. And then you find that sometimes when you go to different business places in America, you're limited where you could go and the way you'd be treated differently because you are in a wheelchair. You find out some business places are not wheelchair accessible, and I find myself on different bus trips I take across the country to meet people on my presidential campaign I'm running for president, and you find that you're treated differently on a bus system because you are in a wheelchair. Just like, I was at a meal stop one time in Ohio trying to take a bus trip to visit some people at my campaign and find out that I was refused service to get off on a bus because I was in a wheelchair. And I never thought I would find that part of my campaign to advocate for ADA requirements, but I hope that I'll be able to see Alexis Steger tomorrow about some issues tomorrow because I see some business places that City Dubuque has authorized to be built here on the flat out had violated the ADA requirements that I find myself involved in as a very peculiar situation. And I also find that this gets to be in a different kind of perspective. I was at a concert recently in Councilville, Iowa, and I was talking to a deputy out there at a concert because we were having a chuckle time, and I asked him, under the state codes, if a passenger is on a city bus, a city bus, and they find themselves injured on a bus. I got, I was on a city bus here in Dubuque. The bus driver took a turn veer up Ninth Street on by the Target Herald and veered off towards the left going towards Mercy Hospital. I got ejected out of my seat like four feet off the ground and smack dab my face in the floor of the bus, and I talked to the deputy out there in Councilville recently. He says that it's a criminal offense for a bus driver to refuse to report a personal injury situation to law enforcement. It's sanctioned pretty well flat out. A commercial bus operator cannot waive that kind of requirement to report to law enforcement, Senator, which I, they failed to do so when I was injured on your city bus. Subsequently, I was refused right to medical attention upon the injury that took place there. I'm kinda surprised the state council would be so naive to thwart responsibility for medical necessities. And then you find yourself, as a presidential candidate, finding out the city of Dubuque hires such a law firm to try to throw up my case because I feel that public safety on a city bus should be paramount for safety, but I guess your city thinks it's a joke, I think. If I was talking to, I talked to the Powhatan County deputy there, and it is a criminal offense by the bus driver not reporting it. I was kinda surprised your state council would allow that kind of stuff to be erroneous at best. I'd like to find out why you guys would think that would be, you guys discussed it in one of the meetings about my situation, and I guess I was being made a joke of. I was like, that's not funny. So, I'd like to find out why the city of Dubuque thinks it's okay to be, because you guys got high-powerful lawyers to dispose of court cases for public safety that basically you guys are just licensed to kill. I just think that if you're injured on the bus, and God for hate's sakes, I didn't die in the accident situation, but it just shows that public safety on community buses should be paramount, but I guess I was kinda surprised your city thinks it's okay to license a kill.
Well, I'm gonna let you know, we're not able to respond to you right now during this public input session, so what's happening though is your comments are in the public record now. So, we have that record, and you've been able to make your point in front of us, but we aren't gonna be able to respond to you if that's one of the things you're requesting at this time.
Well, I just think that you guys should follow what that person told me. I'm kinda surprised, but I'd also like to know if I'm gonna be invited to the city manager's meeting tomorrow, if it's possible.
And we'll not be able to respond to that during this meeting either, but again, your comments are noted, so if there's a response that we'll be able to give to you or someone could give to you, that'll happen.
Okay.
All right, thank you for being here, though. And we didn't, I don't think we got an address. Would you mind?
I live right now in process of moving back to my Fort Collins, Colorado.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for public input this evening?
Thank you, council. My name is Steve Dunn. I live at two-two-five-zero Foy here in Dubuque, Iowa. For those of you not familiar with Foy Street, it is on the north side of Clark going down towards Kaufman Avenue. It is a very narrow street. It's only have parking on one side, which would be the west side of it, so you theoretically must park going up the hill. I have addressed the council before on this issue. There's seven people that live on this hill, and we park going down the hill just for safety reasons, because obviously if you have kids, bad weather, whatever, doors falling on ya, it's just easier for us to get out of our homes to work when the weather is inconvenient. For several years, we haven't been targeted very much for tickets. Here lately, we have been getting tickets for parking the way we park. We were not lawbreakers by any means. It's just the most convenient, safest way for us to park on this street, and we just asked the city council to look into this for safety issues for the people of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else this evening? Okay, any virtual comments?
No virtual comments.
Okay.
There has been some written input submitted. Kenneth Kiss with the Dubuque Audubon Society submitted written input as well as regarding action item number one, Clark Schloss of twenty-nine-twenty-five Burlington Street, and James Gantz with Lime Rock Springs Co. of one-zero-five-three-seven Route Three, both submitted input that's been uploaded to that agenda item.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, with that, we can move on to action items.
Action item number one is preliminary plat of Mozina Farms.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Move to receive and file.
Second by Farber.
And a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Am I coming right to you, Wally? Okay.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Wally Wernmuth, planning services manager. I think you have the PowerPoint. Can you see that before you guys? I apologize, this is not included in your packet, but I feel it's necessary to kinda explain our plating process because I think there is some confusion of what comes before you, what doesn't come before you, what goes to zoning advisory commission, what doesn't go to the zoning advisory commission. But then, not only that, but also to give an opportunity that, you know, we're talking about a subdivision that we had a lot of discussion about rezoning and some conditions that were placed as a requirement for a traffic study. So, just to provide you an update with regards to that and to let you know that in the future you'll be seeing final plats that'll come before you. So, as we all know, this is a property that came before you for the rezoning. This is the area that's referred to as Mozina Farms. It's located south of the northwest arterial, the northwest Thirty-second Street. It currently enjoys access coming from Tiffany Court to the west. So, I just, like I mentioned, I wanna go over the plat review process and kinda what we do when we receive a plat. So, we have a pre-application meeting with anyone who's looking at doing a development with regards to a subdivision plat, and I'm talking about specifically subdivision plats here because there's a lot of other things that we get involved with. But as part of that pre-application meeting, we discuss certain things with regards to, do you have the proper zoning? Is the property have the appropriate land use designation, a lot of other things that get involved with that. We also provide them our application, which has a list of items that they have to submit as part of a preliminary plat. They work with their engineer or architect, whoever is associated with developing that plat, and that preliminary plat submitted is then submitted to our office. When I say our office, the planning services department, because our office is responsible for facilitating the development review team, which we distribute that preliminary plat to the building, fire, engineering, water, and construction and services division, I guess I should say, and the planning department for that review. Once we receive that preliminary plat, that actually goes through a city code review. So, it's just like if you received a building permit to make sure you're meeting building code requirements. We receive it to make sure we're meeting the code requirements located in the Unified Development Code. Also, SUDAS requirements, which is a state urban design, and I'll butcher it, engineers can explain it to me, but basically all the criteria about separations for street and access and visibility and some other things. And also during that preliminary plat review, that's usually when the engineering makes a determination, do we need a traffic study? Do we not need a traffic study? Because we actually have a detailed plan at that point to kinda give us an idea, what's the use, how many vehicle trips are we looking, being generated out of those types of uses? And then in addition to that, our office, the planning services department, gets involved with reviewing to make sure it's in compliance with that comprehensive plan. Once we go through that entire review process and get a traffic study and make all that determination that they're in compliance with those certain rules and regulations, then we take it to the zoning advisory commission for review, and it comes before them as an action item. And this is where it gets a little bit different, a little kinda screwy when we talk about certain things, but if there's no private streets involved with the subdivision, then they have the authority just to review and approve the preliminary plat. At that point, just like with this case, there is no private streets associated with the subdivision, they review it and they approve the preliminary plat. If they were to deny the preliminary plat, then that preliminary plat will come to you for your opportunity to review and override the zoning advisory commission's decision. But if that preliminary plat includes private streets, then it actually goes to the zoning advisory commission and the city council. So, you've seen quite a few preliminary plats come before you, and most of those are just located immediately outside our corporate limits. They're in the county. All those streets are primarily private streets. So, the question is, why private streets? So, private streets require a waiver of our rules and regulations over curb and gutter and some other things involved with it. So, because of that, the bodies have the ability to waive those requirements of the zoning advisory commission and the city council for that. So, then, after that review by the zoning advisory commission, then we send it to the city council for review and approval as an action item or consent item. So, once again, if it's private streets, it gets submitted, it's a request or recommendation from the zoning advisory commission to receive, file, and either to approve or deny the preliminary plat. If there's no private streets involved, like I mentioned, it's basically sent to you as an information item only, so we just request to you as receive and file. That's a courtesy that we provide. We're actually not required to do that, but I think it's very important that you're all informed with regards to preliminary plats because as we go on the next steps, you're gonna be seeing final plats that are coming in based off that preliminary plat. So, after that's all said and done, we get final plats. So, what's the final plat? It's more of a detailed description of a certain phase of a preliminary plat. So, a preliminary plat, in this case, we have over a hundred lots. They're gonna come in with phases. They'll come with the first phase with about thirty to forty lots that'll come before you, and then we have what we call improvement plans, and you guys don't see improvement plans. That's a city code review. That's a nitty-gritty detail of like, this is how thick the pavement's gonna be, this is how, why the ditch is, this is the storm detention area, all those technical aspects that are handed at the city staff level, reviewing all those code regulations. But we also, once again, review it for compliance with our comprehensive plan to make sure that's all approved. After all those improvement plans are okayed and the final plat is reviewed by the development review team, it goes on to the city council. It does not go to the zoning advisory commission. It comes directly to this board. And then that final plat is submitted with a resolution, and then we have a request to either receive, file, and approve that final plat that will come before you guys. So, just to understand, there's a lot of multiple reviews that are happening through that, and we're only touching the plating process. In this case, this one actually involved the rezoning. Sometimes there's other things that get involved with certain things with developments. So, I'll just go over briefly the project review history with regards to the subdivision. The zoning advisory commission reviewed and recommended approval back in May of fourth of 2022, and the city council reviewed that rezoning request and placed a condition that a traffic study be conducted. That traffic study was submitted to the engineering department shortly after Labor Day. There are several reviews or revisions of that traffic study between the engineering department and the engineering department's consultant with regards to that to review, to make sure that it's in compliance for city codes and those requirements that we talked about before, and that traffic study's been reviewed and approved by the city engineering department. So, upon that approval and acceptance of that traffic study, the rezoning was then approved to be to R1 single-family residential. That traffic study took in a lot of considerations. I know I've provided to you, there's a lot of information, there's a lot of technical data in there, but long story short, they analyzed several of the intersections that were brought up before the city council during the rezoning process. Primarily, most of the discussion was regards to Tiffany Court, West Thirty-second Street areas, and then we also talked about all the different scenarios in that traffic study helps identify that Tiffany Court can handle the level of traffic for the subdivision, which is a hundred, about a hundred and one single-family lots, in addition to a ride-in, ride-out access on the northwest arterial. And in fact, that ride-in and ride-out access will actually have acceleration and de-acceleration lanes added to them because it's an arterial. So, what is an arterial? An arterial is a major street that's gonna transfer traffic from one portion of our community to another portion at a higher rate of speed. So, when we look at arterial development, we look at limited, certain types of access to that development in order to keep that flow of traffic going through our community. And with this study, based on the traffic study, a ride-in, ride-out access and the access to Tiffany Court did not change the level of service, which means how many cars are going through there, stoppage and everything. That is still at a level of service A and a level of service B, which is very, very good. What would happen in the future if that, if those would be lower or anything like that, then that's when the city looks at making improvements. But in this case, the traffic study did not identify any issues with regards to those levels of service. Now, it still means, and like I indicated this during the rezoning process, there's still gonna be a lot of cars coming through the neighborhood, right? It's, we're taking an area where there's about twenty-some homes that's basically on a dead-end stubbed-end street, and now we're gonna have additional traffic that'll go through that neighborhood. So, as I mentioned before, there will be more traffic that'll be flowing through that neighborhood, which is seeming to be a lot of the discussion with regards to neighbors and concerns with that. The study did not consider potential adjacent development to the east and to the north because we don't have defined plans. And I don't know if you had an opportunity to watch the zoning advisory commission meeting that's available, but we have some commission members that are actually in the development side of things. We have one engineer that actually gets involved with traffic studies, and you know, it's noted in the letter to you, but you know, each traffic study builds off of one of the other. So, before you tonight, you've discussed and set a public hearing for an urban renewal district. Part of that's gonna involve public improvements for some traffic signalization located in the immediate area, located at Thirty-second Street and JFK. That's actually not required of this traffic study, but it's required of a different traffic study. That does benefit the neighborhood in the future, but it's not actually required of this development. So, as that development goes to the west, and once we receive a plan and that gets developed, there'll be that detailed analysis. We'll get a preliminary plat, and we'll sit down with the engineering department. Is a traffic study gonna be required? If it's required, if there's improvements that have to be made off-site, that's a cost that gets provided by the developer. In this case, the developer is required to put in these acceleration lanes. So, long story short, I just wanted to kind of give you a lot of that background information for that. Just also, just to touch on it, basically, you've seen this, but it's approximately eighty acres, a hundred and one single-family residential lots, two multifamily residential lots. All the streets will be public, dedicated to the city. There is some outlot development with a lot of individuals, kinda small park, park line areas. But once again, this has gone through the development review team. They have reviewed it. It is in compliance with all the city codes and regulations. They did submit a traffic study. It's been reviewed and approved by the city engineering department, so they meet those thresholds and those requirements. This is a copy of the plat. It's in your packet. I don't need to go in too much detail, but it does show how the road will be extended through the area. The developer did note at the meeting, because there was a question, it's like, how's this gonna be phased? So, the first phase is actually gonna include the roundabout area, the ride-out, ride-in, ride-out access, and the access to Tiffany Court. So, right away, immediately, both accesses will be created with the first phase. It's not gonna be a situation where they're developing the backside and when we have one axis in the development where most of the traffic would be going through. There'll still, those two accesses will be established immediately for the development. And once again, very important that we always talk about the comprehensive plan. This promotes mixed-use development. The area's been identified, single-family residential in the future land use plan. You know, we encourage a mix of different types of using for housing affordability in our community for our growing population. This is actually an infill development, and also they're taking consideration the existing topography of the site and the woodlands areas. They're working their development into that area, which gives them several points that they have to meet for sustainability tools. So, that's just some information I just wanna provide to you and kinda get out to everyone. In your case, this has provided you for information only, but like I mentioned, the next step in the process, we're gonna get improvement plans, we're gonna get a final plat for the first phase. That's gonna come back before you for your review and approval.
All right, thank you, Wally. Questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. So, thank you for that report and reminders about, and what's coming up. That's great. So, there were a lot of information in that traffic study. I'm sure glad we got it, and there's a lot of information. Something that's, I didn't find in there, I would love to know, it said, well, a hundred lots and homes are okay. So, what are the limits of those analyzed intersections? They don't say, well, if it's two hundred, you know, those intersections have a limit of, could we get that information from them? That might be helpful as well, to know what those intersections can handle. So, that, that's, I would love to know that. I know that we're thinking about, there may be some more growth there, but just knowing those limits of the intersections, I don't know why it wasn't in there, or I don't know why I missed it. It's pretty long, like you mentioned, there's a lot there.
Right.
And I don't know if that's something that sometimes is put in there and other times not, but I just, I mean, they should have some kind of formula to let us know. What are the limits of those intersections and the ride-in and the ride-out? I also noticed that it says that we recommend approval of this site plan with the recommendations in this report included. So, I know that's gonna be in the final plat, so we're not voting on any of this to approve.
Correct.
But they mentioned that the geometric recommendations for the ride-in, ride-out, there's some signs, there's access, and there's other things. That'll be in the final plat, correct?
That'll actually be part of the improvement plans. So, that was actually a discussion of our engineering department to be able to help with the traffic flow and how that ride-in, ride-out access will happen. They'll be, you'll see that on the plat, but a lot of that description of like how signage will work, how flow will go through certain things, that's handled at the staff level. For instance, you don't see every parking sign on a street that says no parking and a lot of other things, so those are all incorporated in those discussions for that, so.
I see. And finally, you mentioned that we don't have defined plans for the future, but, so talk about next steps. So, if a traffic study is needed, does either staff or the council require that? Can we request that? Sometimes you say the staff requests, and then sometimes, as in the last time, staff didn't request, they were fine, and then, but the council, based on citizen input, asked for that. So, either one could ask for that.
Yeah, sure. So, typically what happens, the request normally would come from the engineering department after analyzing the request. So, with the case with this Mozina Farms plat, knowing that there'd be a hundred-and-some lots, there'll be, on average, ten vehicle trips per lot, and the amount of traffic flow going through, knowing the geometrics of the street, the ride-away width, and just the detailed analysis that they had available, what the engineering department would require would be a detailed site study analysis for that ride-in, ride-out access instead of a full-blown traffic study, just because, you know, knowing the information that's available, that they knew there wasn't gonna be enough traffic to generate major improvements that would happen at this area, so.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wally, thank you for that detail on that definitional explanation. I do have a question about the level of service that was a question about the level of service that was discussed in the traffic study. And how many vehicle trips per day are forecasted? Is it 800? Is it 1,000?
Sure, sure.
I saw those come across the email stream.
Yeah. And I'm not an engineer. I play one sometimes in front of you guys, but I'm a planner by day. Question, so with regards to that, there's a trip generation requirements. Like I mentioned, for single-family development, it's typically 10 vehicle trips per day. So we take that number, multiply it by 10, that's a total dollar amount. So the question is, where do they go? How's that distribution work? That's where the engineers get involved with, based on analyzing the existing location. There's a whole bunch of background information they get involved with, that they use for modeling, that this Anderson Bogart that was working with our engineering department get involved with. And it really depends, sometimes it's just an analysis. So basically, currently right now, everyone that's going to leave that subdivision is either going to go out Tiffany Ridge, or they're going to take the right-out, which will be either going to go right down the northwest arterial, or if you're going to take Tiffany Court to go west. So most of that traffic will flow through Tiffany Court when they're exiting, unless they're going to go down to that. And that's been distributed, I think it's been identified in the traffic study, to be 60% will be leaving through Tiffany Court, and then some will be going through. Now, the other question that gets brought back is like, when they return back to the property, how are they going to come back? And when the analysis was done, if they're basically coming from Central Avenue, or because if you go up the northwest arterial, you can't get into the development, right? So you're going to come up 32nd Street, you're coming down Grandview Avenue, Carter Road, those are the access points. But everyone else coming in is going to most likely come on JFK or the northwest arterial, and it doesn't make sense for them to go down JFK, 32nd Street, come all the way around, come down, where they can just hop on, shoot right down the development, and take the right end of the development. So all that traffic analysis is done through all that modeling software and everything. And so that's all been identified in the report. And based on that, the level of service is not going to change based on the capacity and the design of the streets to be able to handle the traffic.
So that's the number of vehicle trips per day that they discuss could be approximately 800 to 1,000?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you. You have Phase One of being an engineer tonight.
Thanks.
We can ask the engineers that later. Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just like to kind of point out to everybody that this traffic study, which cost money and took time, is telling us just about the same thing that the engineers told us months ago, that the existing situation is more than adequate for the traffic flow that's projected. The other thing that I guess I have to point out to everybody listening and elsewhere, this plat is about this development. It's not about a future maybe. There's no other application that's active. There's no information that anybody's going to build anything on any of those other properties. And so the council's duty today is to, well, is just to receive and file this already done, deal of this preliminary plat. Should those other properties develop, and we've talked about this all along, or should applications come in and the process begin to proceed towards developing them, at that point, we're certainly going to have to take another look at traffic. And the answer may be a signalized intersection, it may be something totally different, it may be it's going to be just fine. Don't know that answer yet because the question hasn't been asked yet. But I think some of us are trying to answer questions that aren't asked yet, and aren't on the table, and aren't part of this conversation today. The challenge for city councils all the time is, there's a ton of information out there. And what's this thing about right now that we're doing today? And we'll worry about tomorrow when something tells us that something's going to actually happen tomorrow. But right now, nothing's told us that. Some ideas of something that might happen tomorrow. So let's not vote on what might happen tomorrow. Again, we're not going to vote against tonight or anything anyway. Let's not worry about tomorrow. This is about today, about getting this development going without impeding it any further.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for all this lovely information, Wally. My question, you mentioned the right-in, right-out. So the developer is paying for that?
That's part of the development. So a lot of times when we get involved with development, if there are some traffic improvements that happen off-site, there's a determination how that's going to get paid for. And a lot of times, that is the expense of the developer. There are discussions, a lot of times with DAs, certain situations where there may be some cost share. Sometimes there are situations where it gets paid through a residential TIF to cover the cost of that, say maybe through Urban Reno. All those things will be discussed how to cover some of those improvements, so.
That's all. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any others?
Well, thank you, Wally. You know, I think it just, I think it bears mentioning that this is, this is an area that hasn't been developed for a very long time. You know, this whole area that we're talking about. I mean, I grew up in that general neighborhood, so I kind of know the feeling of really having cornfields and just open fields in a lot of places. And we're starting to see some pretty serious development in this area. I mean, things are really expanding, and it's happening kind of quickly. And this is happening all over the city in a lot of ways. It's good because that's what we want. We want this development. We're trying to create incentives for it. We want that to happen. But I do think it bears noting that it's understandable that it comes with some worry and some anxiousness about what that means, and just a lot of questions that have been asked. So what I want to close with is, I've seen some really good evidence from the presentations that you've made to us, from all the details that we got here on the agenda that anybody can go and look at, of the level of professional and detailed work that goes into development like this, even when it's happening quickly. So I just want to make sure that the community knows that as we are doing this, and as things start to ramp up, and we start to see more development in this way, it's going to happen with a level of detail and professionalism that we're known for. It's what you do. And we look forward to being able to move that forward, but in a way that works for the entire community, and we'll continue to do that. And I think that this development is doing that. So I'm happy to see this moving forward. And I know that we're just receiving and filing tonight, but I think this has been a good secondary discussion here. And one question, though, the timeline, because I just couldn't find it back.
Sure.
You know, for the next, the final plat.
So the next plat would be up to whenever the developer decides to move forward with the final plat decision. And I just want to add one more point. So I'm the point person for the development review team. I'm not, all that information that you see before you is a combination of about 20 individuals that work for the city. It's just an opportunity where you see my name or some other staff names. So thank you for, I appreciate your comments. And we can't do it without ourselves and all these other different departments associated with it. So, thank you.
Yeah. We want to do this right. We definitely want to do it, and everybody's working to do that. And you're right, it's a wonderful team behind you doing everything. So, okay. With that, the motion is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Action item number two is 2022 John F. Kennedy Road Sidewalk Installation Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jones and a second by Russell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyes is recommending city council adopt the resolution to award the public improvement contract for the 2022 John F. Kennedy Road Sidewalk Installation Project to Midwest Concrete of Piasta in the amount of $538,457.12, subject to Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence and approval of the award. The low bid received for the project is $538,457.12, which is 28% above the revised engineer estimate of $421,097.20. During the development of the construction documents and in consultation with the Iowa DOT staff, bid items related to pedestrian traffic signals and street patching were added to accommodate the federal aid funding for the project. Construction material prices have risen considerably since the original cost estimate was developed for this project. Local contractors have informed engineering staff that concrete materials alone have risen 30 to 40%. Material and labor shortages are impacting the construction industry negatively. It is not anticipated rebidding this project would result in lower bids using these federal grants. City staff reviewed the bid tabulations, and the area's significant increase in pricing are items related to the retaining walls to accommodate the sidewalk. Residents are not being assessed for the retaining walls. Because the preliminary schedule of special assessments has already been established, residents will not see any increase in their special assessments due to the bids received. To cover the additional costs, staff is proposing using $262,699.04 of the fiscal year 2022 funds allocated to Villa Street retaining wall. City staff continue to monitor the Villa Street retaining wall and have not observed any future movement of the wall, I'm sorry, any further movement of the wall. Any additional funds required for the Villa Street wall would be budgeted in a future year. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mike, I have a question for you. The possibility of costs rising for projects like this one, it's something that's happening all over the country. I'm seeing that, right?
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. And it's something that we're likely going to be continually dealing with over the next year, however long, because it's a challenge that's going to come back at us again.
Yeah, between the inflation and labor shortages, yes, that's going to continue to happen unfortunately. And we do our best to try and take it into consideration. But of course, this project was started last year before all those things started happening.
Yeah. And I think it's just important to point out, I mean, this is just, it's not a solely Dubuque challenge. This is something that's happening everywhere. But we're going to continue to try to put the puzzle together and figure out a way to problem-solve when these challenges face us. So, okay. Yeah.
We worked really hard on this project to make sure that it was as affordable as possible for the residents. And I'm just really pleased that we're able to incorporate these increased costs, and yet the residents will not see those increases in their costs. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. All right. The motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is ordinance amendment for civil service commission meetings.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
I'll second.
Motion by Jones and a second by Russell. Adrian, am I coming to you for this one?
Yes, thank you. Adrian Brightfelder, city clerk. I'm going to briefly summarize my memo submitted with this agenda item. Iowa Code, Chapter 400, contains all legislation related to civil service positions, including the requirement for a civil service commission to conduct entrance examinations, promotional examinations, and act as an appeals board for our civil service positions, which are police and fire positions within the city of Dubuque. City Code currently specifies that civil service commission meetings occur on an ad hoc basis. And after some discussions and feedback we've received from Police Chief Jeremy Jensen and Fire Chief Amy Scheller, we determined that altering the meeting frequency to monthly meetings will bring consistency and reduce delays to the process. So the proposed ordinance amendment updates city code to specify that the civil service commission meets monthly, and that there is no obligation to meet if there is no business. And there is a section that allows for special meetings, which may be necessary to address time-sensitive items in the civil service hiring process, such as certifying candidate lists, if those items occur before a regularly scheduled meeting. So that is all I have, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Jones and a second by Russell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Don't believe there's a resolution there. Would you care to?
Sorry. Receive and file and adopt the action item.
The suggested disposition is approve. I wasn't sure if...
Oh, yes, you're right. Receive and file and approve the action item.
Okay.
Thank you.
I still second it.
Perfect. All right. We got a motion by Sprank, second by Resnick. Mike, yeah, Mike, please.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Arts and Cultural Affairs Coordinator Jenny Peterson Brandt is recommending city council approve the program materials establishing the application guidelines and requirements for the National Endowment for the Arts American Rescue Plan Act-funded Arts Operating Recovery Subgranting Program. The Arts Operating Recovery Subgrant Program is a one-time restricted funding opportunity aimed at assisting the health and diversity of Dubuque's nonprofit arts sector in response to economic and community impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. As such, staff carefully researched and principally crafted to federal requirements a notice of funding guidelines, applicant questions, and scoring rubric to proceed with the subgranting of the operating support funds in the amount of $435,000. Materials were thoroughly reviewed by a grants-focused subcommittee of the Arts Commission to ensure alignment with federal mandates, equitable funding best practices, reasonable application flow, and community needs. Materials were then approved by the commission on Tuesday, October 25, 2022. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that I'm really glad to see us continuing to use the ARPA funds that came our way in such a responsible way. I think, you know, when you think about who lost the most during the pandemic, there are several groups. But arts and cultural venues especially, in the places where people gather, and we're used to, we're kind of going back there now. I think a lot of us are experiencing this. I had the opportunity to see a very good high school play this past weekend. And, you know, all of the, all these opportunities are things that we lost during that time, and it's great to see us being able to invest in that once again. So I'm really glad to be able to vote on this. Any others? All right. Then, motion is to receive and file and approve. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is amending ordinance 14-17-A for the Derby Grange Road Housing Urban Renewal Plan, version 2022.1.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
Try and get it right this time. I move to receive and file, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Russell, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the ordinance, amending ordinance 1417A, to remove property from the division of revenues within the Derby Grange Urban Renewal Area. The proposed removal of property from the amended ordinance for the Derby Grange Road Housing Urban Renewal Area is necessary to accommodate the creation of the new John F. Kennedy Road Urban Renewal Area. A part of the right-of-way to be included in the creation of the John F. Kennedy Road Urban Renewal Area was previously included in the Derby Grange Road Housing Urban Renewal Area. The right-of-way does not generate any tax increment from increased development in the area. However, staff recommend removing the property overlap to avoid any confusion in future planning and development of the area. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. The motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is corrected legal description for ordinance 28-22 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2022.3.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council approve an ordinance correcting the legal description in ordinance 28-22 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2022.3. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? All right, motion is to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Jones and a second by Russell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Action item number seven is Public Works staff videos.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and view the video.
Thank you, Assistant Public Works Director Ariel.
One second, I'm gonna, I'll need a second. Yeah, there we go, Russell, there we go, yeah. Thank you very much, Ariel.
Sorry, I get so excited.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Anytime we get a chance to really just brag on the crews in Public Works, I know John really wishes he could be here, but he is taking probably his second vacation in the last 47 years this week, so, so kudos to him, but I'm sure he's probably watching, so, working all the time. So, this first video that we're gonna view is just kind of an overview of everything that Public Works does. Now, there are one thing that you won't see in this video is the front office staff. So, those are the supervisors and the frontline workers who answer the phone calls, push the papers, get people paid, get the crews paid and whatnot. But while you're watching this, also notice the versatility that's required of the crews. I mean, they go from flood wall pumps to snow and ice to sewer maintenance and street overlay program, and it's just amazing that everything they're able to get done. With that, the second video will be on the overlay program, which did come in at 10.22 miles this year, and we finished that on 1020, which was earlier than we did last year. So, always setting, we're kind of competitive with ourselves, so that's great. That was definitely a big push for Paul Davis, the field supervisor. And then the final video, and I have Ken here, if he wants to add any words, will be for the litter fence at the landfill. We know this is a big issue, a big topic of concern for anybody driving Dodge Street out, but it's a huge project, and that also just was finalized, and it was over 4,400 feet, I believe, of various fencing around that area to protect it, so.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ariel.
They're showing your video again out there in the hall.
I don't think we're gonna be able to play it tonight, but apologies to the Public Works and everybody who worked on this, but we had some curmudgeons in the back. Few hiccups here and there for technology, that happens sometimes, but thank you very much, and would encourage people to go, the YouTube links are right on there, so you can see this on the city's YouTube channel, and I think, has it been posted on any social media yet? Has it?
Yes, both of these have, and I know that they're also, Public Information Office put all of these together, and they're fantabulous videos. They're also working on one for the automated carts as well, so as soon as that is ready to go, we'll definitely be back, so.
Excellent.
But this is a great opportunity for John to come next time, too, so.
Excellent, all right, well, thank you very much, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to table that officially so we can bring it back, or just do it informally?
Colonel.
I think it can just appear on the next agenda or whenever we want to bring it back.
For this.
Since it's just essentially receive and file and watch, and there's no formal action taken, should be okay.
All right, so then no further action is required at this time? All right, then we can move on, Adrian.
We will move on to council member reports.
Any reports, yeah, Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind neighbors, of course, there's an election tomorrow, and if you live in my neighborhood, do not let the construction at Comiskey Park deter you from voting. You can still vote there tomorrow, the gates will be open, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Very important announcement, thank you very much, Mr. Sprank, I appreciate that.
Want to give a shout out to the DRA and to the marvelous initiation or inauguration of the new ice field. Shout out to Marie Ware as well, and to her team for, and to engineering for getting it done on time for everyone, and it was just awesome to see how many kids were out there skating, and how many adults tried to skate and scooch around, but it was just a great event, and Mayor, also Mike and Cory, so thank you guys for doing that. I'm on their foundation, and it was just really great to see the energy, and it was a great welcome back home for the team as well, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Ms. Wethel.
I was happy to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet, and there were many awards given, but wanted to specifically call out the Dubuque Dream Center. They received the Scope Award, really for their contributions to children and families in our community, and incredibly well deserved.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, I know Mayor Kavanaugh will let you talk about it as well, I'm sure you want to, it was great to welcome Avelo this week.
Yes, it was.
And so, so excited about the momentum and the energy, and I know so many people who have already booked flights, and it's exciting, so get on their website and get it done.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, stole my thunder a little bit on that one, that was the only thing I was gonna say.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, it was, it was exciting to be there, and we're just getting started. I mean, it's, it's great to see air, air service coming back at the Dubuque Regional Airport, for sure. Ms. Resnick.
Very quickly, I do want to say a personal note, two damn important natives, myself and Terry Goodman, and I have to say that, one of the things, it was a big learning curve for me when I was first elected, but one of the most astounding, astonishing things that I learned was the kind of resources that Terry Goodman and her partners and the partners that she works with, and how much it helps the citizens of Dubuque relieve the price of some of these major things that we do here. It's because of the great work that she does, and it was, it was millions and millions of dollars, and I was complaining about a $10,000 investment, and then we would just hear about the kind of money that she was helping to bring in. That was astonishing, and she's done it, you know, for so long, so I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Let me do this as a council report, I've been thinking about how to get this information to you. Citizens spoke before about the parking situation on Forest Street, and I got involved with that about 10 years ago when it was an issue, and the problem that the city has is that it's a state law that says where you can park and when you can park, what side of the street you can park on, and we needed the state law changed in order to allow the city council to say places like this, it's okay to park on the wrong side of the street because of the geography of Dubuque, which is, you know, which is unique to where everybody else comes from. Unfortunately, we got that introduced, we got it passed in the Senate, at the State House, and then it got to the House and a retired state trooper slash legislator from God knows where, Iowa, out where it's flat, where this isn't an issue, amended the bill to say for snow removal. And then it passed, and that was that, and went bam-bam last, last week of the session, so we didn't get the bill changed. So, we still remain kind of impotent to change the rules on whether they can park on the sensible side of the street or not, so, back, back to Mike, I guess, for, for whatever's next there, but we're kind of impotent for it. I worked on that pretty hard, I was doing a lot of public safety lobbying at the time for other things, and this is a slam dunk, and it was, till the last minute.
Appreciate that background. So, on the screens here, I see the video that we wanted to watch, and I also see two Public Works workers that stayed all night to stay with us, and I'd hate to ask them to do that again at another meeting, so I'm wondering if it's okay if we go ahead with this, or how we want to, how we want to proceed? If we want this on the agenda.
Procedurally, it's no problem.
Not a problem at all.
It's been on the agenda, you can do it.
Okay, okay.
It's just a slight deviation from the order.
Just want to double check, Eric, is it actually working?
Yes, I had to restart it.
It is, it is gonna work, so we'd be able to watch him, okay. Then I'd, I'd prefer to go ahead and do that, so we can, we can get that done this evening and thank them for being here. So, we're actually gonna back up on the agenda, go back to the last action item, which is number seven. We already have a motion and a second that's still on the table, so we can just procedurally move right through. Okay, so Eric, you can go ahead and roll that footage, please. Oh, those were great. Yeah, that was excellent.
Yes.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for, oh, is there one more, still? Oh, I thought that was the asphalt overlay one. Oh, here we go.
Blowing trash is an issue, especially in the spring and in the fall when more seasonal winds come into play. What it does is it blows up and gets into the trees, the waterways. Our board for the landfill agency recently approved the project in February to install the litter control fencing out here around the active cell, that that'll help contain that litter. We have portable fencing units, we use it the active phase. Once the litter becomes airborne and gets trapped by those fences, we still have the expense of going around and collecting all that litter, bagging it back up and re-burying it in the landfill. The best first step is to bring your own bag to the store when you shop. If you're unable to have the reusable bags, you forget to bring them with you, bag all those plastic bags up and take them back to the store. If you at least put all those bags in with your regular trash bag and contain them in there, that'll help prevent them from becoming loose and blowing around at the landfill. You can also just engage in litter collection activities. The state of Iowa has a adopt a highway program, then the city of Dubuque has an adopt a spot program. The agency has a program for all Dubuque County communities where they can get bags, grabbers, gloves, they just sign up on our website, and we'll supply those. Any of those bags are like free of charge, they don't require any extra tags, have them picked up with your regular trash. them picked up with your regular trash.
All right, we're good now. Okay, perfect. Those, yes. I'm glad we got a chance to watch those, those were great, and well done by Public Information Office again, but public works, I mean, just the scope of everything that you do is really kind of mind-boggling. Have to admit, it's a bit difficult to watch snowplows this time of the year, because nobody wants to see that quite yet, but, very good, so thank you very much for being here this evening. All right, so that motion was to receive and file and watch those, so Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. All right, so I believe we did our reports, so we are on to a closed session here.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Remove the council going to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Violence Discussed Pending Real Estate Transactions.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney of the city council we'll consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Krenner Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel. Resnick. Sprank.
Aye.
Farber. Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, we are in closed session.